Very good.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October twentieth committee, the whole meeting to order at five thirty six P M. Counselor Hunt sends his regrets and Counselor Mander will be attending by Zoom. Could I call my deputy mayor, Mariki, for the land acknowledgement?
I would like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St. Andrews is located on treaty one territory. The traditional lands of the Anishinaabe Cree, O G Cree, Dakota, and Denny people, and the national homeland of the Red River Maquis. They respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations Inuit and Maquis people in spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Thank you. I have three adoptions on the agenda, motion to adopt the agenda I presented. Could I remove this? Counselor Sliker, second or Counselor Fevelkorn, any comments by council?
Can I add discussion about the municipal Maquis soccer fields? I remember I'd asked for a report on this and I don't see the Cal agenda here and I don't see a rec report either. So there's no information about these fields.
Oh, okay. If it's all right, there's no need to add it. We got it from the C A L. In response to your email, a report is coming to council on the October twenty eighth agenda.
Right.
Okay. So all those in favor, the motion to adopt the agenda as presented, all those in favor? That is unanimous, it is carries.
Um, Michael, don't we have to remove the?
We haven't got to that point yet. I was dealing with it now.
A part of changing the agenda?
No. Reception delegations are item four point one is the R C M P Inspector Lambert with the quarterly second and third reports. He is unable to attend this evening so that he will be put over till the November committee of the hall, I believe, seventeenth. But we do have the research project proposal by Inovantage. The C E O Gavin Vanderlin is present. So welcome, Gavin.
Thank you. My soul, council and staff appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've been doing all the wishes first. We have been doing some work with Public Works and with Peter on the lagoons and over the last couple of years assisting with specifically with treating phosphorus levels in the lagoons. And so that's been going reasonably well. We did come through areas here and ask permission to run a test with one of our systems. We had just built a new system and we're taking it somewhere else and we needed to test it. So we brought our cyclone system to the lagoon just for a couple of hours and tested it. And Peter and the staff were there and were able to see it running and functioning as we had set it up. And led to some of the discussion. That's a bit of a background for this research project. Just if we look at, I'll just follow the slides for a bit. There's a research project proposal that we're going to present tonight for council and we'll give you the reasoning behind it. My name is Gavin Vanderlin. I'm the C E O for Inovantage. We focus very much on wastewater clarification, specifically phosphorus removal from municipal wastewater and specifically from lagoons. The project team that we put together for this is myself, Dr. Ari Zangrano, who's our chief technology officer. He was supposed to be here this evening, but his wife is pregnant and they had a doctor's appointment this evening, so that to priority. And Dr. Chulian Yon, who is the professor of civil engineering, civil environmental engineering at the University of Manitoba. The proposal is for a dual research project looking at nitrification and phosphorus removal. With municipal wastewater lagoons, there's a lot of functions happening in the lagoons. Lagoons are awesome. They do a great job of what they do. Uh, but when you need to expand and and grow, there are certain restrictions that they have. The one thing lagoons specifically in Manitoba don't do very well is or don't do hardly at all is treating phosphorus. Phosphorus is a molecule that remains in the water. And there are biological ways of removing them, but not not specifically in lagoons. And so in Manitoba, all the lagoons are treated chemically treated to remove uh, the phosphorus before it heads into the wastewater stream and specifically to Lake Winnipeg. Those are in two thousand sixteen, the provincial regulations changed and municipalities had to reach the one milligram of phosphorus or equivalent to one pot per million. I know the lagoons, yeah, when we've tested them in the past, generally sit at about seven. So we were assisting municipality this year with uh, reducing the phosphorus in the lagoons down to one pot per million. The second part is a nitrification and that's uh, reducing the nitrogen in the form of ammonia in the lagoon. That's one of the areas where your license requires you to uh, reach certain uh, ammonia levels. And that process is done through nitrification. In uh, in this project, we're going to be looking at setting up a M B B R, which is a a moving bed bioform reactor. And that is the biological, it uses a biolog- biological action for removing uh, that ammonia. I'll tell you a bit more about the details as we go through the process. It also removes the B O D, which is a biological oxygen demand. And then it's organics in in the lagoon and it'll and it consumes those organics with the bacteria. The second part of the project is the inner cyclone, which is a technology that's been developed by Inovantage and myself. It's a advanced phosphorus removal system. In the wastewater lagoons, most times what happens is, and what we've done for you is treat the phosphorus in situ. So we add a chemical coagulant like alum or feric to the lagoon. It combines with the phosphorus, precipitates out to the bottom of the bottom of the lagoon and it remains there. We've developed a system that treats it and catches it and removes it from the system so that it doesn't remain in the lagoon and can't repeat. Uh, the second thing that it does as well is it will remove the total suspended solids. So almost all the particles, so the phosphorus that are removed between ninety and hundred percent, suspended solids removed between ninety and hundred percent. But also remove some of the biological oxygen, oxygen demand up to fifty percent of that. Couple of definitions. I don't want to take too much time in this, but uh, part of it's important. Uh, the nitrification process, reverse biological process and M B B R trial system where ammonia in waste water is oxidized to nitrite and then nitrates. Uh, with specialized bacteria, nitrifiers attached to moving uh, bioform carrier enabling effective nitrogen removal under aerobic conditions, which is critical. The M B B R, which utilizes those carriers is a system or the moving bed bioform reactor, which is a biological wastewater treatment technology that uses suspended particle carriers to cultivate bioform, enhancing the removal of organic matter and nitrogen and phosphorus. The compact system offers higher process stability, reducing sludge production and no need for sludge recirculation. Make it particularly suitable for small to medium sized municipalities in Manitoba. The key behind this, and I've got a couple of examples here are the are the carriers for the nitrification. I mean, I could pass them around. Basically what they are. Let me see if I.
Do you wash those or?
No, these are unused. So far, I think. Might go a hop step ahead of myself. These carriers, what happens is you'll see in the top left is a carrier similar to this one. Um, this one's about the same. The bottom left is a carrier that has bioform growth. So grows bacteria on it. And then it gets put into the top right into an aerated basin. Where you have the aeration coming through and in the bottom right, you can see where the the tank is full and it's bubbling up with oxygen. Couple of key pieces to this is it needs a lot of oxygen because oxygen is directly proportional to the amount of to the functioning of the bacteria that can then consume the ammonia. The key to the whole system. I said that uh, lagoons are incredibly effective at what they do. The problem is uh, in rural areas, they they work well because you've got a smaller population and you can use a lot of land for the lagoon. But when you start expanding your lagoons, you run into problems of the cost of the land and you get to, you know, size of city of Steinbeck and then you're using, you know, sections of land for the lagoons and it becomes too large. These carriers generally have between eight hundred and twelve hundred square meters of surface area per cubic meter of media. So in a box of one cubic meter, the surface area on these media will have, these are about twelve hundred square meters of surface area. The advantage of that is you have this massive surface area that can grow the bacteria that can fulfill that nitrification process and remove the ammonia. That's why these have been used so uh, so effectively.
Yes, so. Those. Would go as a lagoon. Like that's what it's.
Okay, it doesn't go in a lagoon.
I don't believe this is.
So you put them in what we're proposing, and I'll get to that, we put them in a tank like you'll see in the top right there. That's made for the size of your wastewater effluent. And so you go from the lagoon into that tank and it gets processed in that tank and then flows out.
So for our lagoons, how many of those would you? Would live in there?
So, okay, I can do the math in my head. My, without having to run the trials. My guess is that you would require about four hundred cubic feet of tank, about sixty percent full. So probably twenty four hundred cubic feet. So twenty, so two hundred forty cubic feet and I can't remember the conversion to meters there.
My face.
Yeah. Two yards or two by twenty seven to get to yours. Anyway.
So the little thing is that picture up there.
Yeah, there is that picture on the top left.
Very good. I think it's a big.
No, that's why I redrawed one. On the bottom right is a tank with these media. You fill the tank sixty percent capacity and they bubble up. They 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 pretty much neutrally buoyant. They're fractionally heavier than than water. So the oxygen pulls them up and they circulate continually. And the bumping together of the media is what allows as bacteria grows, they have to be soft off and they grow, grow, and the bacteria gets soft off and taken out and the biology is taken out. So, yeah, the number of media, the square footage or the square meters per cubic meter and the oxygen are the key components of this.
We uh, we took, uh, we went to a demonstration. I think Nipewa was doing this and so when we looked in the in the pool, uh, the two tanks that they had there. Uh, these guys were floating on top and completely covered on the top. And they'd be moved around on an ongoing basis, right?
Yep.
And uh, so uh, on those tanks, it's probably the side of this room. Uh, and so I've the entire surface is covered. I don't know if they.
What's, yeah, it's, it's one of those tanks of twenty feet deep.
Yeah.
And there was sixty percent full. So it was very full. Yeah. So.
So where did the tanks go? Because we have the lagoon.
Yeah. You put them next to the.
In the lagoon.
Put them next to the lagoon. Right next to the lagoon. So when you're going from your primary cells, you've got two cells. Okay, I've got some pictures later on. You would put them between the two cells so to flow from your primary cell, your big one on the north and your big one on the south, into this tank, have a certain residence time, and then flow out into your secondary cells and out to the marsh. So this would take the time of uh, it would accelerate what happens in the lagoon. What you leave the water in the lagoon for six months to get clean. This would do it in a couple of hours. Yeah. So this is, most municipalities, when you've got to expand, you're either going to be building massive new cells, which gets really complicated if you're on tourist stories. I can tell you what, you've probably heard them of municipalities trying to buy land to expand their lagoons. Because the main problem is, is usually one place you can go. Because you can't go ten miles away, you've got to go next to where you are. And there's one farmer owns that land. And he knows the municipality is coming for it. And so I know a couple of municipalities that have paid in excess of twenty thousand dollars an acre for the, you know, hundred sixty acres they needed. So that is one of the issues. Whereas this gets put in a tank, it's small, convenient. That's why Nipewa put in a tank like this. Because they were in a valley by the river and there was no place to expand. And they couldn't put in these massive, you know, hundred acre lagoons. So they put in a moving bed bioform reactor there.
So isn't there a regulation we can't release in the winter? There's a certain time limit with provinces. So with this system, can you release all year? Or no, that's.
Yeah, that's a good question. So basically with these systems, you can, but you have to be able to be discharging to body of water that is okay for the province. So I'm not sure in your case, you're going into a marsh. Uh, with municipalities that are sitting on rivers that have enough flow throughout the winter. If the most municipalities are sitting on smaller rivers or narrow rivers by the lagoon. And so discharging there, you cannot be in winter. But you've got to be kind of in the Ascendable in a red, one of the large rivers that's got consistent flow. And you can discharge into it. I'm not sure the case, I'm not sure what the regulators would say about the marsh. You do have enough hydraulic capacity to hold the water over winter. So that is fortunate. You've got two good cells. So you have that. This just will accelerate the treatment process.
Ah.
For you. So this would allow you to take in more wastewater or water from different parts of your municipality if you want to do, do more work in that. Uh, if you want to use it a bit more. And this is, yeah, probably one of the most cost effective ways. So most municipalities. One of the most, a lot of municipalities in the province, Nipewa is unique. A lot of municipalities in the province are using Sager Systems, which is a submerged attach growth reactors. They use uh, gravel or certain uh, small stones in a submerged bed with oxygenation that goes through. And so that's a similar technology that goes bioform on it and and that's what they're using. They are, you know, as we part this project into a cost comparison, they are extremely expensive. And down the road, need maintenance or removing the biomass from the beds, whereas this biomass sloughs off. So the key of the project was a good question. I'm just going to jump here to give some of the keys of the project uh, would be to do the the M B B R and the clarification piece. After the M B B R, you need to remove the phosphorus, but you also need to remove all the biomass that comes off. So that's a complicated piece. When we went to Nipewa, the reason we took some of the staff to Nipewa is I wanted them to see an M B B R and a phosphorus removal system. It was not our intention, but when we got there, the phosphorus removal system wasn't working. So, yeah, it was, and it's brand new. They they built it last year and commissioned it last year in September. And if part of it froze off or winter didn't work properly. And uh, when we were there, it was gummed up. And in fact, the week after we were there, I was not there to sell Nipewa anything. We were there to just show Peter and the staffs how it works. And part of my motivation was to show them a six million dollar system that we can do for a third of the price. And it wasn't working. And a week later, they emailed me and said, please just bring your system and run it here because we earlier were there, trying to fix it and couldn't fix it. So it was really good for us, but not so good for them. So the key is having both. You've got your nitrification tank and you've got your phosphorus removal and your clarification tank. Those two pieces are key. The way they were doing it in Nipewa is they were using filters. They were using disk filters. And the disk filters that failed, they failed in Nipewa. They failed. If you speak to the counselor Tache, they have a three point six million dollar building sitting there, built in two thousand seventeen, it's never worked. They tried to do the same project with disk filters. Uh, Winnipeg Beach, I have problems with their disk filters. Guaranteed it doesn't work. I know we've, that's the reason we've the inner cyclone we've developed uh, does separation without filtration. The whole key is not to use, not to use filters because multiple places not working in six million dollar facility, Peter saw, wasn't working. Commission lost yet. So.
So one of the big things that I I I'm I'm interested in doing this uh, project with Gavin is just because we have a new facility uh, at the lagoon um, that is virtually completely non-mechanical in it. And so uh, my concern is, um, one of my concerns is uh, knowing that there's some pressures on the R M to potentially open up the the area to take on more solid waste or more wastewater. Um, is, could we, we we would have the ability to um, to process the water much faster than of our nature to take its course and wait, wait um, a month or two for the water to uh, get to a point where it's um, it can be released. And so with this uh, research program, project. Um, if we get the ability to um, to process the water in a, in a timely fashion where we can uh, release the water within uh, two weeks, for example, at the hope to two months. Um, then uh, that's something that I I would um, would would be interested in in um, implementing there in the long term. And that's why we're uh, I'm interested to work with Gavin on this stuff.
Well, with the new lagoon, like expanded lagoon.
Yes.
How much, and I know it's Counselor Hunt that always wants everybody else to use the in St. Andrews, use the lagoon. How much capacity do we have now with the new lagoon? Left. We still have a lot of capacity or no?
The new lagoon? Yes, we do. Um, right now we have, we have an over a hundred capacity. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, we're still uh, uh, trying to get used to or understand how much capacity we have and what our, what its capabilities are. So we do have time on our side to figure out um, uh, what the, uh, right now, we're, we're, we have, we're using one side of the main, the main primary cell, one side uh, per year. And so then we switch over to the other side and do that, the same thing. So we're trying to learn that part of it. Um, this part here is kind of um, uh, allows us to uh, fast track in terms of our perception of water. Uh, that will give us more confidence even just to uh, we would be able to handle anything, any wastewater coming our way. Uh, and any volume of wastewater coming our way in the future.
Thank you.
Another thing, you know, part of what I mentioned earlier is, so you're fortunate, those lagoons are really awesome. Those new cells you've put in are are working really well. The one thing they don't do is remove phosphorus. So that's why we've been treating with Peter.
Yeah.
So this system, you know, we're looking at the nitrogen removal and the phosphorus removal. Half of it will do the phosphorus removal. The inner cyclone system is made for phosphorus removal. So that is one of the options that you have to treat and you have to do. And even this year, we had some complications that got to be resolved at the end of the year. But the phosphorus is an issue that you currently don't have treatment for. And so we would, something needs to happen there. And if it's only phosphorus, then there's a couple of options we can discuss. If it's phosphorus and the nitrification, then this is a longer term plan for you guys. If you want to direct more wastewater to that facility. So that should be the goal of this. Should be to make sure that in the future you have the capacity to do it. I just want to give you a bit of an indication of what what it would look like on your site. So. Oh, there we go. I checked them if we didn't. Oh, I see where I've done the page. I'll share the screen. Sorry. Okay, so. There we go. Just drawn to. Okay, so yeah, we see, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the inner cyclone. Uh, it's basically inverted cyclone. What happens on the left hand side, wastewater will come in. We have a structure inside. Uh, a chemically conditioned wastewater comes in. So right now we're adding aluminum sulfate or alum into the water to precipitate the phosphorus. Uh, that water would come into the tank. We have a system in there that's designed to make sure that clean water comes out the bottom and sludge comes out the top. That is a removal of all your phosphorus and your suspended solids. Uh, the system, the full system looks like that where you have from the right hand side, the control system, the chemical injection, the chemical mixing and the cyclone uh, that removes, that separates the solids and the liquid. That is a critical part. A tank is a critical part that doesn't use filters. It separates liquids and the solids without filtration. Which is why we won't have hassles with it. This is your lagoon setup. Those three middle cells, cell three, four and five were the existing ones. Cell one at the top and cell two at the bottom of the new cells that were uh, put in two years ago. And then the other two water bodies are just the borrits that they use. Uh, our suggestion is to so this research project would be a small scale. Um, you need to scale at a certain rates, the, what we are suggesting. We would put a manhole in uh, between the two cells. That would be a one and a half diameter, four feet deep manhole. That would be the biological activation tank for the media. So we fill that with media and fill it, put a ration in there. And that's what would grow your bacteria. So we take water from cell one, take it through the manhole and then discharge the clean water to cell four and the sludge to cell three. And three is now being used for slab storage to a certain extent. That's a bit of an expanded view. Those two big red lines are the two current um, pipes between cell one and cell five and four. Those exist. Um, what we are suggesting is to, uh, the mouse works. Is to put a manhole in and put a, an insulated twenty foot shipping container over the top of it. So we can draw water from the right hand side um, the pipe, pump it into the manhole. Uh, let the biological action take place with the media. And then discharge a clean water downstream of that. And the sludge will be going to the other pipe, which then goes to cell number three. This is another, I'm expanded view of that. That's a shipping container with the manhole to be sucking water in from uh, from the pipe. And then. What's that? Cell one. Coming down to cell four and then discharging the sludge down to the pipe that's going between cell one and cell three, where the sludge will be stored. So that's basically what it would look like. That should have the inner cyclone in, it would have the chemicals in and the blowers for the aeration for the M B B R system would be in there. And the control system, it would be automated, insulated and ready to run over winter. So currently, what we are recommending is that Inovantage will provide the cyclone clarification system. We will provide an insulated twenty foot shipping container, the inner cyclone, all the chemical injection pumps, the chemical mixing system, the chemicals, the M B B R carriers, uh, media, those media that you have, the aeration, the pumps and all the research and reporting. That should be done by us and the university will assist with the research and the reporting side. Uh, our request from St. Andrews is to provide the physical uh, parts that are going in the ground there, the manhole, the installation and the connections to the existing piping with the drainage valve and the electrical supply, which is already on site. The funding that we have in place, we have uh, are ninety five percent approved by Research Manitoba, which is a good sign. We, we should be hearing from them by the end of the month, but this is the budget that has been presented, which they've accepted. They're just doing the final pieces. We expect it to be approved, but as I said, it's ninety five percent approved. They will be contributing a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We will be contributing the eighty four thousand dollars. We're asking St. Andrews to contribute the, somewhere between twenty and twenty five thousand dollars to install a manhole and the valve and the connections to to that manhole on site. This is a junior project will run from now over two winters until the the spring of twenty seven, I guess. Um, into that spring. Um, we will be uh, Inovantage and the university will be managing it on site. Um, we get your staff involved as much as they want to be. Um, but we'd be managing all the, all the parts and all the research and all the uh, reporting to Research Manitoba for their project.
And I just want to jump in Gavin at this point that uh, this started when, when I was at A M M and I I recognized that Gavin was an expert in this field. And Peter had just come on board and I said, we need to uh, contact Gavin and they built, they networked a relationship here. Uh, and 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 which brings to an opportunity to, to St. Andrews to be uh, innovative with private partners. So a true private partner, uh, private public partnership. And in be a leader in the province for new things that are happening. So I just wanted to let you know that part of it. And uh, this is such an opportunity for St. Andrews and something to be proud of if we can move forward with it.
So questions, so the university would look after, there would be no one to help from our I mean, Peter would obviously, but we would need to hire staff to look after this or doing.
During the research projects, if.
For two years.
Yeah, for two years. So the scale of this would be running at approximately five gallons a minute. Your final installation, we would have to figure out, but my guess is that it's in the hundred gallons a minutes category. So we need to scale it up by twenty, by twenty times at least. And so in that time, then um, there would be some staff time required from your staff. They would basically the system is automated and runs itself. Peter saw it running in Nipewa. When it runs, it runs. Basically, the system is automated and runs itself. Peter saw it running in Nipewa. When it runs, it runs. Um, I believe we have done enough work to mitigate the problems we saw in Nipewa and what I've seen in other municipalities. And we have the privilege of working on sites with a lot of uh, industries as well as municipalities. And I believe we've mitigated most of those problems. So the staff time, even on a final installation that's mechanical like this, would be quite low. Um, it's fully automated, can be managed from the office. Um, uh, yeah, everything would be automated. But it would require some stuff then.
Counselor, do you have a.
Um, what's the lifespan of this system? Like so after the two year, a research project, would the RM own that equipment after?
Own it, own what you guys are putting in the ground. The rest of the equipment would be temporarily, temporarily set up there. Okay. Um, if we did expand it to a full project, then we need to build a significantly larger tank. Um, this was the most cost effective way we could do a research project without getting millions of dollars on the table. So putting a one and a half meter diameter manhole in the ground was the cheapest. We looked at multiple options. And that gives us an acceptable size. Um, after that you need to put in, I'm guessing the tank that you guys require, required. At this point, without doing the work would be something that is about twenty feet long by ten feet wide by twenty feet. And so that tank would have to go in the ground. The media for that, it's quite expensive. Um, a plastic media, but to fill a tank like that. Uh, probably. Uh, probably costing excess of a hundred thousand dollars just for the media. So it's, you know, it's not cheap. Um, and then. The system will be able to run itself after that.
But this also provides us, doing this and partnering and being a leader. It, it provides, you know, we lay that documentation down, moving forward and, and, and uh, it would be favorable for grants that. You know, we had done this and you know, we're looking at environment and, and opportunities and would probably uh, put us. In a leading position to get grants in this type of technology in the future, I would think.
Yeah, for most grants, you require pilot studies.
Yeah.
And you require documentation. And so that would all be provided as part of this. There'd be extensive reporting and justification behind why it works. So that should happen. And I know, uh, in the past, FCM have been good at providing funding for wastewater and wood related things. They're not doing a lot of that right now. And I've started discussions. To challenge some of that, to make sure that they get the wastewater back on track. So we'll see where that goes, but that's, um. The, yeah, for some reason they, they do less wastewater stuff and they need to continue doing that. But this would go for any of the ISOP funding, any of the federal provincial funding would need a report like this.
Counselor, do you have a.
Uh, how long does the media last?
So they lost uh, for a very long time. They generally rated it twenty years. But there are examples of, most examples of MBVR systems being put in. The media has lasted more than twenty years. They started being putting in, put in in the nineties, early nineties. And so a lot of them only got to the twenty year age, you know, not that long ago. But those media, um. Most of the ones that I've heard about are still running.
So basically a hundred thousand dollars with the media is, or twenty years is ten grand.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's cheap. You know, I mean, this whole system, you know, it's not, you know, I, I don't want to give too much of an upfront cost of the media. The system is, you know, it's going to be uh, cost something, but it is the cheapest way of expanding. And uh, if you can do it in such a way that you have a system that works efficiently. You'll come to the end of the system and you'll know whether this works or not. That's advantage. Um. Nipewa will solve their problems. So did Nipewa do their thing. I just use them as an example, but you know, they have had issues with Veolia, who are one of the largest. Wastewater companies in the world. And they still had a system freeze up on them. And I don't understand how that happens. But you know, we've had the opportunity now to run into your program and you can get all the, all the problems out. And make sure that if you install it, it's going to run well.
What I know is when we are pipe, looking for grants, like you were saying, a lot of bands require that you have a feasibility report and all the other stuff. So by doing this uh, pilot program, we, we gather the data, we get the reporting for all that. So if we, when we get to the point where we need to put mechanical systems in, at, at the lagoon. Uh, we have our ducks in a row to be able to apply for funding and be pretty confident that we'll get that, I would say.
Yeah, and we can assist with that funding. Uh, that's something that we can output as well. Another Nipewa project. Not through an advantage, but in previous life, we had written a funding application for them for the whole expansion. And we are, um, got an extremely high success rate with funding applications.
So if this is agreed to, when would it be like the manhole and all that other, when would this be installed?
So if it's agreed to, we have spoken to um, installers and all that, and they would be available as soon as they're available is middle of November.
Oh, so they could do it in the winter time?
Yeah, they install this in November and uh, um, we could get the insulated container on sites as soon as possible. Yeah, it needs to happen. If we want to have time for this winter to run for two winters. And once the funding is approved, then we can't really wait for next winter. Um. Because then there's not two winters in a two year funding cycle. So yeah, middle of November.
And I want to, I just add something here. This is, this is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars you're seeing on the screen. And the St Andrews commitment is twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. Peter's got that in his budget right now. He, he has that in the budget. So it's not like we're looking for new money. We're telling you of an opportunity that we're having here. We're, we're being transparent. We want to show the public that's listening tonight. Uh, you know, innovative things that we're doing here, things we're trying to do that are good for the environment and for the community. And let council know. We want council to know when we're, we're doing uh, good things.
I should.
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm glad to hear that that's part of, it's, can be worked within the budget because as far as. Our rate pairs that use the lagoon, it's paid for by the people that use it. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that there was going to be, you know, what is the increase going to be to the rate pair to use the lagoon? But if it's within budget and potentially, uh, you know, this allows us more users and maybe in the future we reduce fees at, at the end of it. I, I'm hoping that's maybe in the works.
It gives you as a municipality, a good long-term plan, like it's thinking further out. So you're not going to get surprised. Um, Brad can probably tell you if you've done any work with wastewater or water in your municipality. The inflation rates on that engineering work is probably more than ten percent a year. It's incredibly high. So whatever's going to cost five million dollars today, in a few years will be ten. That's.
The number's been uh, eighteen percent in a lot of places.
You're right. Yeah, I've seen those numbers. It's crazy how it just keeps going up.
Okay, so as council people can say, we have it, the new lagoon, it's use your pipe. We have this, yeah, I, I'm sure it's in a biolab, but nobody, because we're thirty-three miles long. So cell St Andrews has the low pressure system. So, and there's a, a rule that anybody north of Calder can use the lagoon. Anybody south cannot. But with this installed, that means anybody in the RM, if there's capacity of anybody, everybody can use it.
That's correct.
So then if this is installed in November, that means our south end can start using it, which as council people refer to. That would keep more people using it, that to keep, it will keep the cost down.
Well, only after we do our research and, and uh.
Yeah.
And, and get, get answers from the university and, and from the consultant and that. But that's what we're going to, we're driving towards more use. So it's a good, it's an investment that could really pay off at the end.
Okay, so it couldn't start right away.
No, I don't believe so.
The research.
So the, so there would be an expect, expectation to increase usage over this two-year period. It would be status quo. And then we would look at the, what the research provides us to.
Right, okay.
No, because we were getting, we're getting questions and assumptions made in meetings when we're talking about the lagoon. And, and we went on record, Peter and I, and saying, you know, we need data, we need time to, to work and get, get answers for the council on. What we're doing. And then uh, these two fine gentlemen uh, move ahead and are doing exactly what we said we were going to do to get. Uh, council some answers, right? And, and I don't want to go on assumptions or what somebody believes uh, can happen. I want to go on data. I want them to provide me the data and then I can give council and the RM the, the real answers based on data.
The other, the other thing considered though, with a system like this, if it gives us the ability to down in the future. Uh, process the water in a very timely fashion, why wouldn't we be able to reconfigure uh, part of lagoon to pipe. So uh, waste wires directly from a sub-admission straight to that room. Uh, and, and process water. That would give us the ability to do that. The way, the way it's set up right now, you would never be able to do that, right?
No.
So um, so that's another thing to consider, right, for the future.
Uh, that's a very meritorious.
Yeah, I guess uh, to summarize, what we're doing is uh, number one, first of all, we're buying information. Okay, we're going to take that information and with that information, uh, it will give us a platform to uh, apply for uh, different. Uh, federal funding, uh, and perhaps provincial funding. And the other part of this is it will benefit us in that we will have increased capacity of the, of the lagoon. And uh, increased lifespan of the lagoon, right?
That's right, yeah.
And, and we're dealing with experts, right? Uh, uh, you know, I'm not even talking provincial experts. I'm talking North American experts or, you know, world experts on, on this type of technology. And not only doing it for ourselves, I, I believe it's for the better of the whole. We're doing it for everyone in the province, right? We're doing it for everyone with a lagoon, uh, can look back at this and say, St Andrews played a role in getting data and information. That we all use now, right? So we become in our brand, that St Andrews is, we're leaders, right? We, we're leaders and we recognize looking into the future and how to, to get things done properly.
He just called me an expert. He called me an expert?
No, yeah.
This is, so if you were doing, you know, you said that you're purchasing data or information.
Yes.
It took us a lot more than the twenty thousand dollars to get this information. You know, with, if it was a research project, if you just wanted a feasibility study done. I don't know what you've paid for feasibility studies in the past, but it would be more than this. Um. The other advantage of this piece of research is. The likelihood of success is very high because the inner cyclone piece hundred percent works. We're running it in multiple places. The MBVR is not a new technology. We're just focusing on the cold weather notification and we believe we, so we know the MBVR works. We're just trying to make sure we can do in the cold weather like they've done in Nipewa and we know it's, we know it works. So we know. There's um, difficulties, but there's almost a hundred percent chance of success because we just have to overcome some obstacles. We're not trying to do something that's impossible. We're just putting the two pieces of technology together that haven't been put together before as well. And that's what makes it unique. And that's why I think we've got a very high chance of success compared to what we see in other places.
And this is great. Well, thank you. Any other questions, Counselor? Counselor Vondor, do you have any questions? You're on Zoom.
Not really. I'm uh. It sounds uh, promising. I'm just worried about the uh, potential final cost after this initial uh, research is done. Which I'd be concerned about.
So question of that, if it turns out after two years it's successful, then it's going to be another hundred thousand to do it. So there's a new council and they just say no. So then does all this equipment get removed? You can do it at that time or?
Yeah, then we just load up the shipping container and drive away.
But a hundred.
But the piece you paid for stays, that's the key.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That will be that used camera throwing out there, right? Yeah, yes.
Sorry, go ahead. Uh, wasn't the media just a hundred thousand dollars? That's not including the tank and all the apparatus that might be, uh, have to be utilized. After uh, this initial research.
I, I don't want to run away with the details because we haven't figured that out, but the price of the final product will be. One M G, you know, it will cost more than a hundred thousand dollars. And we're comparing it to the six million dollars, you know, the road, so it will be a lot cheaper than that.
But we'll have data and we'll be able to make informed decisions, right? We, we don't, we don't have to uh, uh, buy into a bigger project, but I, I sure would make some data and evidence and. And the ability to make decisions based, you know, good informed decisions based on data we have. And I mean, into the future, St Andrews needs options.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll just give you data that you can implement in two years' time or ten years' time and you'll have it there and you'll know for sure what it does. That's the key. And then as council, you can make an intelligent decision at the right time.
I wish like her.
So do we need to pass the resolution?
No, we're, it, it'll go forward to council for a report or like we'll get an admission report and a resolution will be put forward to council. We can't pass, we can't pass anything at a council, pass regulations with a council.
We, we, we have money in the budget, so our plan is we're informing council and we're moving ahead at this stage.
Good.
Right.
And it's committed to the whole, so there's, there's no decisions. But I don't think we'll be coming back for a, a decision from council to move ahead. We have money in the budget and this is part of our.
So it's a good one.
Thinking of our vision, right?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I guess on our side, the only thing we're waiting for is a sign off from Research Manitoba, which we're expecting shortly. If anything, we can uh, move ahead with everything.
Okay, perfect. Does this all administration's hands, Peter's hands?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is great.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. Would enjoy being in front of council. Thank you.
You missed it, Gavin. You missed it.
I missed this part, yes.
Thanks so much. Careful driving home.
Yes, thank you. Warmer media battery. Don't have any more. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Bye.
You too.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, next item. We have no old business. Oh, sorry, number five, the management reports. The September twenty twenty-five monthly management reports are attached. Does anybody have any questions, Counselor Dornbus?
Uh, a couple of questions. Uh, first for Brayden. Um, there's a monument restoration. You've had to request for a monument restoration. What is that? Uh, let's, I missed something in previous reports.
Sure, I'd love to talk about that. In a previous uh, career, I used to work for surveyors and we did monument restoration, so very familiar. Uh, the Dominion Government Survey of uh, Canada, mostly uh, central, eastern and a portion of western Canada was done in a grid-based format, mile by mile. That's where we have mile roads that come from, from these grids. And at the north, north, northeast and east quarter sections. At each of these quarter uh, mile sections are Manitoba Government Survey posts in Manitoba. And those outline the framework for our road systems and the mile roads and the government road allowances that define essentially a lot of rural municipalities. Now those uh, municipalities, we have a responsibility to maintain those. So whenever those are disturbed and likely offenders are farmers, uh, just throughout operations, it could be anything, construction, roadworks, ditching, you name it. Um, I've seen a lot of those. We have an obligation to repair them, but we don't know about them until a survey is done in that area. So for example, for one of those two, uh, could be a survey from last year where it was discovered that it was missing. They had to re-ascertain it in a restoration report. They submit that to the municipality. We have an obligation to say yes. And since they're the surveyors, they're the ones who have to replace it. But through Terranet or land titles, they have a reimbursement program for up to fifty percent of the cost. So that's what those reimbursements are for.
They'll call or send an email to us and say, we, we found this is missing.
Yeah.
I thought it was like some massive monument held up.
I think, hey, well, this doesn't make sense, one, right?
So.
So sometimes we'll see reports where it's a single monument and you may have seen them before where there's those orange markers and they have a little plate that says survey marker nearby. They're usually about a foot nearby. Sometimes it's multiple that have been destroyed through, you know, combining or farming operations. And it could be for several hundred dollars or several thousand. It depends. It's difficult to forecast, right? It just comes as they come in.
Thank you for that. Uh, two more. Uh, I didn't see on the finance report now, beat a dead horse, but is there anything happening with the audits?
Yeah, I can answer that. We, we've submitted the twenty-two. Uh. Our goal is to submit the twenty-three on November fifteenth and the twenty-four in December.
So progress on the twenty-two?
They have it. The auditors have it.
Yeah, I know. It's just, oh, yeah.
Well, the auditors should just go, all the documents have been submitted that need to be submitted.
Okay, so timeline is still, when it comes, it comes.
Well. November fifteenth for, for the twenty-three is our, we plan to have it submitted.
Yeah.
The twenty-three and December fifteenth, the twenty-four.
This is coming from the auditor to council?
Coming from us, coming from the RM. Remember we had to reconstruct the, the twenty-two, so. As, as the twenty-two got reconstructed, that makes the twenty-three and the twenty-four readyable.
And uh.
And as Kerry told us. It'll be really fast once.
Thank you. Uh, is there still burn restriction?
Are you?
There's still a burn restriction?
I don't think so.
There was a burn ban and then it went down to restriction and I never saw any correspondence saying that that restriction was lifted, there's a restriction from. Uh, from eight in the morning till eight at night, so you only do a burn?
Uh, I'm not aware of that, but we have someone that's on fire on council.
I I haven't heard any change, like. Changes, I just assume that. Restriction to a free? I I'm, I'm not sure if it's a provincial thing or if we've got our own. Okay, just wondering. I haven't heard anything.
Be the signs up.
I know.
On signpost saying there's a burn ban in effect, those have all been down for months.
Well, there's that big sign in front of Larder's that they use, there's always burn restriction and, and, and in progress or whatever, so that restriction was from eight to eight. And.
I remember reading that.
Yeah, and then I haven't seen it again, so I, and I didn't get any correspondence saying that.
So I guess that it's.
Well, then we can just burn. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else, Councilor Siker?
Um, I just would like to discuss the bylaw report. Um, I know that we've discussed it a few times and I'll be table before. Um. I I really need to request in new and different format for this report. I understand that there's privacy involved and I'm all for that. It can be locked up for uh, only council to see. But there needs to be much more information, because when we're out in the boat and somebody comes up and starts. Telling you their story that they're having with the neighbor or the bylaw or whatever. I hate standing there looking stupid.
And then that's not really a counselor's job.
It is, it is a job, but what goes on in.
Tell them to submit. Under the service trucker.
Service truckers aren't getting work, I haven't gotten one back in two months, so it's. It it's a lot.
What kind of information are you looking? An address?
I want the address, good.
Okay, so we'll look into that and we can, we can put an address on potentially and lock it up.
Yeah, yeah, that, like I had asked that a few months ago. But I see that nothing's been done about it. Yeah, I definitely would like to see.
It's, it's not just necessarily hitting a button. And all the addresses show up, it's a little bit of. Of, of work, right? So, but we'll, we'll look into that.
Any other questions on the management reports?
Yep.
Yep.
Councilor Mander, go ahead.
Hi, sorry for the uh, echoing. Uh, since Peter's there, I was wondering uh, when I, when I saw his report. Uh, we discussed having a building over the South Saint Andrews uh, River Road. A treatment center there. And I'm wondering what's happening with that, uh, and as reported, also, it says it's uh. Potentially deferred. Uh, so I would like some answers in regards to that.
Well, I can, I can answer that because Peter's not in the room right now, that. That that would have to come to council for uh, for budget and the financial plan. So you, you, there's a cost to that, right? You just. Uh. Uh, you just don't say, you know, we're going to do that, uh. We would need to know the cost and the timeline and. And uh, and then who pays, right? Who pays would be the people that are on the, uh, on that wastewater system.
Well, I understand that. We just had a presentation where we're giving out twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars for a uh. Research project that's in the budget. So uh. I can't see a building costing more than that that would be in the budget.
Well, I believe a building would cost a lot more than that.
I would have thought that would have been undertaken when we asked for that uh, months ago. To have a quote done and uh, looked into that.
Well, but we still, we still wouldn't. You, you know, if we're uh, at that position, we still can't do anything till next year when, when the financial plan's done.
Already in the budget for a research project. We've got uh, South Saint Andrews residents that are smelling sewage and have for years.
Well, they, they, they couldn't, it couldn't be years because. The, the sewage has just been started, so I don't, do you need two years or do you mean ten years?
And as the uh, South Saint Andrews low-flow sewer. System has been installed, that South Saint Andrews uh, pumping station has smelled like sewage. And I don't think that's appropriate for the residents around there.
And, and we've been addressing it. And if, you, you know, if, if you're looking to spend uh, three, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. It's going to be applied to the uh. Uh, to the residents that are on that sewer system.
Well, I can't see it being that much for a building over that uh, pumping station. But anyways, I would really like that to be looked at uh, more expediently than it has been. It seems like that's been put on the back burner. While uh, some South Saint Andrews residents are living in a, in a sewage zone.
Ralph, did you want me to call Peter? He could ask.
No.
And there are any other?
My next uh. Comment I'd like to make is uh, this road paving renewal. Uh, we had this work base. Go throughout our communities. And uh, complete their uh, portion of the road renewals. While we have fall upon us and snow in the forecast, not in the near future, and we don't have any paved roads yet. And I think. Terrible what's uh, kind of been going on with this and um. I guess I'd kind of like some. Firm dates of when the paving is going to take place and even if it can be. Uh, taking place with the weather the way it is and uh, with the road uh, being saturated now and this work base saturated.
Yeah, thi- this isn't a surprise that, that uh. That we're at this place, we, we uh. Uh. Uh, we had direction from council early in the year to. To change the way that we were doing roads. And then we, we came to council and. Uh, we had another pause in. In how we were uh, doing road renewal and. And uh, uh, it's not a surprise to council that. Uh, when you do road stabilization, that the asphalt team. Uh, would be a different company doing it, so. Uh, we're following direction of, of council and. Uh, yeah, you can't, you can't put asphalt down uh, when it's raining. But and, and you, you know, you have to coordinate uh, two different companies and. And you do the best you can with them and, and I know the company that's. Uh. Doing our asphalt team is in the community and, and uh, I've seen them on site. Uh, I, uh, getting ready to, to uh, to do paving, but uh. Uh, the, the weather is not good today, but I know they are in the community and uh. I don't believe that you can get firm dates with, with road renewal. Uh, in any community, like. Uh, dates can't be that firm, but you know, we're, we're. We're still on track to get this done. Uh, before the snow flies and. And uh, the last fifteen years that I've been doing road renewals in RMs. Uh, usually you have till around Remembrance Day for asphalt. And the asphalt that will be taking place in, in uh. Uh, the RM of Saint Andrews. Isn't extensive, so uh. It's not like it's a two-month job to asphalt, it'll be a lot. Shorter duration than that, so talking to the contractor. Uh, they are still firmly believing that they could get this done. And unless I hear something different from them, that's what I'm, uh, I'm still prepared to tell council. Uh, yes, it's going to be getting done this year.
Okay, I was just uh, concerned that I haven't seen any work and uh. People are waiting for a paved road and I'm just worried about the base now that it's saturated. How that will uh, turn out. Over the years, if we try to pave over top of it.
Well, I would think the contractor.
Oh, I was just gonna say that uh, Chris, the uh. Uh, the uh, uh, type of road base that uh. Herb base put down, you know, that can last uh, over a year without uh, having any uh, any type of uh, asphalt on it. It's very durable, it's not gonna deteriorate. Uh, so uh, you know, whether we get it done now or in the springtime, really doesn't make much of a difference uh. In, in terms of uh. Uh, in terms of the uh, damaging the road base, we're okay on that.
And I can, I can just let council know, our plan for. Uh, year twenty twenty-six is to come to council in. In November and December with our, our road renewals. And uh, although we don't do our budget till later in the year in our financial plan. We're gonna come to council and say, here's what we're doing and ask council for a resolution to commit to that. And, and then we will begin our tendering process at that point. And when we come to budget, uh, probably in March. Is uh, with Kerry's forecasting, you're, you're, you as a council are committed. You're committed to what your resolution is passed, so we're not hinging on, is this gonna get passed at the financial plan?
Good, thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, any um, any more questions?
No, I just.
I just wanna add this, this Madam. I mean, that's a good question by Councilor Mander.
Go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to uh, command the South Fire Hall for uh. Having thirty-one calls and uh. Going to all calls and doing a great job.
Thank you. And did you hear, you were both talking and talking to each other, the CAO just commented, you had a very good question. Okay. The CAO just commented, you had a very good question, in case you didn't hear that.
No, I didn't, sorry. Thank you.
Why is his?
Cause he's in ELO.
Okay, number seven, new business, seven point one asset management program, slide dashboard. Presentation by Brayden and um, RCA Oprem.
I'm gonna quickly share my screen here. Maybe a little slow, this is very uh, intensive on the internet draw, it's GIS program, so. Hopefully it can just stay along for this uh, brief example here, but uh. We've been working with, I'm not sure if council is aware, but uh, after Sinchena had uh. Relinquished IT responsibilities to Hub, we've been partnered with them. Uh, for a while now, since early this year, they've been great. Sinchena Consulting has uh, gone to focus on GIS, which is their specialty where they came from. And as well as asset management. So part of that, we have a uh, asset management committee among administration. And we've had, I believe, two quarterly meetings now, looking to improve uh, asset management within the municipality. And uh, we just had one earlier in October and there was an advisory group along with Hub. That uh, Peter, myself, uh, our CAO. And Kerry were, were invited to, so we attended that and he gave a presentation on asset management as well. And with that presentation, he touched on starting small. And with that starting small, you wanna start with tangible assets that we have in the municipality, assets that have. Features but not overly complex features, so we've started with signs. And on the screen here, you'll see, this is an inventory of all the signs. That the municipality has. Um, there are no, um, you may know, there's no stop signs along the highways, those are within MTI's responsibilities, but these are the amount of signs and signposts that we have, so. Just under thirteen hundred signs and under thirteen hundred signposts, some multiple signs per signpost. With this, uh. A uh, a student from Sinchena went and collected data on each of these signs and drove uh, throughout the municipality over. Several days recording the location, the condition, the type of sign, uh, what kind of regulations it has. Uh, post condition and also including features like photos. So this first photo, just as an example. Here's one on uh. It's close to Okan McMarsh, right? There's just a photo that illustrates the sign, but then if we wanted to get a little bit more detailed, you can focus with. Certain types of signs where they're located. The conditions, the information that's on them, different features of the asset. And so this is great, where we have a, a library of information uh, within asset management. We'd like to take this potentially to the next level, but we're starting. Uh, just with this piece for now, uh, potentially this could be utilized by Public Works Department with a signage truck. If they note that there's a sign request, that a sign's been knocked down. Or a piece needs to be replaced, it could be uh, included into GIS noted in one of the conditions here, you know, very poor, poor, good, fair. Uh, and when they do their work orders, they can go and tackle the ones that need that most, and then when they're on site. The idea is to snap a photo of that work being completed with the asset being updated with the updated replacement, and whether that's the complete. Replacement of the post sign and features, or just a, a feature of the sign, maybe, you know, Willow Crescent had fallen off. Whatever that may be, to improve our uh, collection of data and uh. The awareness of assets that we have and that we need to maintain for the municipality. And so this is just a dashboard, this is just a quick uh, brief overview to show some things that we're working on uh, in the municipality. Uh, like I touched on applicable use by Public Works, some discussions in our asset management meetings touched on our next focuses. Uh, of course, earlier this year, I, I presented council with a land inventory report, that's a very simple asset, there's not many features with land. It's just a simple inclusion that can be. Uh, integrated with Munware for uh, asset tracking and management. But another thing that we're looking to explore in early twenty twenty-six. Is a fleet management software and that would integrate with Public Works. Uh, the fire departments, the bylaw, any vehicles and equipment that has servicing requirements. Uh, that could be updated with automatic notices for. An oil change, tire replacements, whatever that may be, dependent on the asset. So that's something that we're looking to uh, budget for in twenty twenty-six. And uh, we'll move forward if we have more information at that time, but I just wanted to provide just a brief overview on things that we're working on right now.
Would this be something down the road? Fire trucks and all that stuff could be put into?
Uh, absolutely, that would be the next.
Like all their equipment, when the oil change that way, there's no ominous on as to who's doing what.
That's the idea, right? So we start slow, uh, in, including the assets in them and then building on the features that they have, so for something like a fire apparatus, that could get. Complex, right? A lot of uh, different features on them. Uh, but for a work truck, it's, you know, pretty, pretty simplified, right? So you start small and then you build up that fleet, right? And then as uh, managers and public works superintendent or the fire chiefs oversee and get. Familiar with that software, we build and expand on it, it's, it's a living document, right? Just continuously build on it, yeah.
I remember this started when I was a counselor. Asset management. There was a thing, did they? Is the, did the records here, there were, all the culverts were being done at one point?
We do have covert records in G, in GIS, yeah, uh, it's not currently up to date, but we have. There's thousands of culverts in our GIS data, yes.
Cause I think that was starting when Ron Hawley was here, right? Public Works started with the culverts.
Had, yeah, I, I had supplied uh, Ron with some of the data early on in my time here at the RM, yeah.
Cause Ron required by government to have asset management.
So this is.
I think this is awesome, as long as you keep people trained on how to. Maybe not how to take picture, but you never know.
Yeah, I'm a firm believer in GIS, I use it every day for, for work. Uh, there's a lot of information that could be had in there, really, this is uh. If you wanted to compare this to an Excel spreadsheet, this is a living document, an Excel spreadsheet and. Justin Sinchena himself said oftentimes they get shelved. They get put in a folder and not touched for months on end, and then when the next person who opens it, they're left with uh, breadcrumbs, you know, trying to piece together what was had, so this is a continuous. Uh, software that we would just continuously put in and maintain and reap the benefits of.
One of the other features is we uh, we have curb stops already in the GIS.
Yes.
So as part of the asset management, uh, when you pick on the curb stop and then the metadata showed up. It can show you all the historical uh, stuff on when it was installed and all that, so we're working toward that as well. Uh, all the historical data will be connected to that specific curb stop. We started with sign because something where uh, once we develop the signage uh, asset. And, and everything related to that, then we can um, we can do it any other asset as well, okay? And we'll just build on that.
Perfect. Wonderful idea.
Any other questions about council? Okay, thank you. Nick, you're done?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Seven point two petitions, stop signs and speed limit reduction. This was brought forward by Counselor Dornbach.
Yes, you'd like to just keep on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So um, now that AK Soccer is down the road, uh, uh, unless we're here, there's been a significant number of. Vehicles uh, driving down at, I'll say breakneck speeds, but way faster than the normal speed limit that's going through. Um, during our neighborhood get-togethers, I've uh, heard from a few uh, people in the area. Especially Yums and List where they say. Especially Yums and List where they say this is or something you can do about this. I said, well, let's start, let's see what we can do as a group here and and move forward, so. Uh, they have requested some stop signs, and I think these stop signs were once requested a couple councils ago, if that rings a bell to you. Yes, no?
There was discussion, I remember.
And stop signs on the corner of Young and List, uh, in both directions there before the tracks. And a possible reduction in speed since we'll be a lot more kids in that area as well, so. My personal experiences that when you're walking down that road, they are just flying by and there's just completely inconsiderate. And even when you try to get them slowed down, wave your hand and they just, they don't care, they just keep on going by. Counted about twenty-five cars go by once after practice was over. On a weeknight and um, a- again, it it just doesn't seem to bother them that they're going that fast. And I know that I had mentioned to. Administration and as well as the owner of AK Soccer at one point in time, listen, can you talk to some of these parents and say, listen, can you slow down a little bit here? This is not. It's not a road that has a sidewalk for one, so you're walking on the road. So I asked him, uh, one of the neighbors to put a petition together, and she put the petition together, and I brought it to council here, so. It's on there. We'd like to see something done if that's possible.
So we we. I've talked to Public Works, their committee to put in some stop signs there. And we'll look at the speed limit. Also, we're gonna have something in a in a future meeting about. At the rec site, there's work that's being done outside of the zone. Uh, that that A K has, so. Uh, we've addressed that with a stop work order, so. We've we've informally called them and we formally put a stop work order in. So those are some of the things we're doing, and then we'll look at other traffic calming measures and. Uh, even maybe phase in some. Uh, road stabilization and paving of the road, uh, coming from the other end, which may encourage other people to. To come from the other end if it's a paved road, and if we plan to have. A big recreation complex going on that whole frontage, then, you know. Uh, to have the pay, uh, road paved. Uh, in phases, I believe, uh, is probably the right direction to take there if we're going to. Uh, start bringing things in, because we want people to be coming more from the McPhillips side.
Yeah, and you know, right now, uh, that part of the field side is is a mess right now because it's dirt and there's a lot of traffic down that road. And again, this is just one practice that's happening tonight, so, you know, municipal fields come in that area, you're gonna have two hundred cars coming. Down tonight, and that's a significant amount of traffic.
As as a administrative organization, so from the administrative side, we fully agree. Uh, with the residents in that area and you bringing that forward as as a counselor that we. We recognize that it's a real problem and we need to address it.
And addressing it before winter?
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and would I be wrong in saying that this is a a seasonal thing? This isn't gonna be something that's gonna be happening in the middle of January. We're not gonna have this type of traffic.
Well, well, moving forward, our agreement with A K is to have a domed facility there, right? So at at one point, it's going to be. Uh, not seasonal, so right now it's it would be seasonally. But in the future, it will not be.
So we wanted to get things started ahead of time before, so be proactive instead of reacting.
What is the, it's fifty?
It's fifty currently, yes.
Okay.
And I do thank Public Works for putting, they did put a laser or speed sign on this road there, so it's. Again, we don't know how effective it would be, but I did notice that they put it on there, so that's appreciated too. Too fast, too fast, you went too fast.
Seven point four zoning bylaw update.
Yeah, I can speak to this. So just to keep council involved where we're at with the zoning bylaw update, we had the initial kickoff meeting with consultant W S P. On September ninth, included myself, our C A O and a representative from a community planning branch, Selkirk. We had reviewed the R F P, uh, confirmed the scope of work, so going through each and every line item that was in there just to confirm the work order and the procedures and. Hammer out rough approximate deadlines. We had selected, I believe it was June first twenty twenty-six for the final deliverable, that zoning bylaw. Um, but we discussed, you know, what's working with the bylaw currently, what's not, what are some issues we've seen internally with administration? Uh, one of the big ones was the use tables. Uh, being on separate pages, so if you want to see the agricultural uses, that's on page, you know, forty-seven, residential's fifty-eight. Why are we flipping back and forth? It should be a singular use table. All that and many more discussions were had. It's included in the meeting notes, I believe. Uh, everything that's included in there that we talked about. Uh, we also had reviewed some outreach, so as part of the zoning bylaw, there's gonna be plenty of public engagement. We've had emails sent out to all neighboring municipalities with Saint Andrews, sent to the C A Os. Who may or may not, you know, delegate to their manager. Uh, or development officer of that area to review if there's any concerns with areas that abut right up with the neighboring R Ms. And then we also had a stakeholder list that was prepared, which included, you know, internally council, administration. Uh, those same contacts at the municipalities, as well as our land developers and those who invested into building our community here. And so there's an attachment of that survey that was sent out to those stakeholders. Uh, it just closed last Friday, so we should be getting some good feedback sometime soon, uh, and I believe this week. Uh, I had here, uh, the survey concluded, results are forthcoming. Uh, the draft technical review recommendations memo, so this is gonna be what's guiding the development of the zoning bylaw. We can be expecting that sometime this week from the consultant as well, so we'll have that to review. There's a steering committee. Uh, that's composed of, you know, our administration and red river planning. We'll be reviewing that before it's sent back to W S P, who will then prepare draft zoning bylaw that would be presented to council. And then with that, there would be a final recommendations memo, an in-person workshop with council, uh, and that steering committee. And then we would, uh, the R M would create a zoning bylaw update or a landing page on our website to keep residents informed as it evolves from that.
When do the residents have input?
After the first reading, though, will be, uh, two public engagement sessions of two open houses, uh, one in the south and one in the north. We've earmarked, you know, Saint Andrews Community Center for the one in the in the south. For the north, it could be in Petersfield or even further north. We're not sure of the venue yet, but to help, you know, reach both sides of the communities, both north and south. And following, uh, the public engagement would be public hearing prior to the second and third reading and then the adoption. So that's the streamlined version of it. Of course, there's a lot of moving parts. Uh, throughout the development of the zoning bylaw, but we'll provide continuous updates to council. Uh, as well as we have, when we have something to post on the website, we'll create a landing page for that.
Council members and questions, Councilor Slaker?
Where are you at with the R R P D participation in?
So as I understand, R R P D has been awaiting approval from the board of a work plan for their involvement in the project. Uh, they had requested what their preliminary involvement in the project would be, and I kind of summarized. You know, their involvement in the steering committee, uh, meetings, the in-person workshop here, roughly twelve to fifteen-ish hours of total involvement. From their planning department, typically that'd be from Derek, the manager of planning services. Uh, from what I understand, he hasn't received that approval from the board, or there's been a work plan that's been forthcoming. There is some information that the consultant requires from red river planning that haven't been provided with yet because they haven't secured that approval. That's like a summary of all the recent applications in the past five years. Uh, you know, we have the individual files for that, however, they have a master spreadsheet of all of that information, conditional uses, variances. Uh, the consultant would really like to see like home-based businesses, conditional uses. Uh, how those have been approved or defeated by council, what are the specific. Conditions that we see that are recurring, if they're recurring continuously, let's put that in the zoning bylaw as a hard requirement. Let's eliminate the need for loaded conditions on a conditional use and make it standard, right? Things like that, group living for colonies, um, why is that considered multifamily? It's its own separate entity, so things like that to tidy it up. But yes, we're still awaiting.
For ten to twelve hours of Derek's time, he needs permission from the board.
Send these, the board members should know, I spoke to Jennifer after the board meeting. Cause Brayden had said like Derek's not attending the meetings, you know. Uh, so she advised, um, Derek, cause Brayden wanted me to know if Derek was responding to his email. He's on holidays. Um, and I told her what happened and I said, all the work here is being done for Saint Clements.
Yep.
We're having to pay out fifty thousand because Derek couldn't do the job. We're so twenty-five years behind on this. And she said, and I said, kid, you know, we paid for it, we're paying on our own. Um, but, and which isn't our R P D job, so I said, well, can he at least forward to Brayden? And W S P, all the information collected so far. So she had looked, she said, well, I don't see why not, but she wait till Derek got back from home.
Is that last one thing?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm gonna confirm all this up in an email.
Thank you.
To her, then I'll copy both of you as the board member. Because. We're paying them, they work for us. I see no reason that it can't. All the information he's collected over the years cannot be forwarded.
Well, if that's twenty-seven staff members, I'm quite sure somebody can pull some of my cell phone sheets and get it, but we need. And I don't understand why we need board information, but.
Well, I kinda.
Yeah.
That is like, again, they forget who pays them, but.
I'll put your email, I'm hoping you'll be able to go back to this.
No, yeah, yeah, that was, these are just two anomalies, that's all, we're good.
Thank you.
Oh, and Walter Street got approved, you know, I'm sure. What the, could Walter Street? Um, Councilman Mondo, do you have any questions?
No, nothing in regards to the. Bylaw, just, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, having some say in, uh. Letting the community have some say as well, so.
Oh, there will be two public houses, open house.
Yep, so that's good.
If I can add the consultants out of it, it's expected around December, January timeframe for. The open houses, we'll have those dates well ahead of time, once, when they're confirmed.
Hopefully it'll be in December, or January, not December with the Christmas season.
We wouldn't want it too late in December, so we, if it gets too late, we may just hold off until the January to make it, yeah, more accessible.
Hey, next item, R M letter to Minister of Environment and Climate Change about the North End water treatment. That we added to the general public and well, council got an email with this copy of the letter, thanks Lisa. And it's just so the public can see that we are concerned about this stoppage of UV treatment to wastewater.
Madam Chair, can you go to seven point three?
Oh, sorry, R R P D, September twenty twenty-five permit issuance report, it's attached. Did anyone have any questions on that? No. Okay, next item in camera, motion that council move in camera.
Can I, before we do that?
You're cutting right out, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, before we do that, I would like to comment about your letter to Minister Moise.
Say?
I was just wondering if we could send that to the Selkirk Record for, uh, residents of Saint Andrews to, uh. You know, see that we are trying to mitigate that.
Well, it's, it'll be on our recorded meetings, it will be, it's discussed tonight, the letter is accessible to any, to everyone. I don't see why we would pay, uh, to have it posted in the Selkirk Record.
Five percent of the people in Saint Andrews don't watch our, uh. Our broadcasts or go on the website. They're more apt to read a paper that gets delivered to their, uh. To their residents every week. I think this is an opportunity for us to be proactive in our messaging and. And let the residents know that we are against this type of thing happening in our community.
Walter Slaker?
Uh, that the C A O did just not get out on all our social media, may not put a copy of it out that way. Facebook, Instagram, all of that, the R M of Saint Andrews has done the following and attached a letter and put it out there. The cost and everybody reads, meanwhile, in Saint Andrews.
Because I don't think a lot of people even know that that news story happened. It was a very, uh, small snippet on C B C and. When I talk to a lot of the residents, they're not even aware of of what's going on. So I think the more that we are trying to inform them about this, the more traction we might get in. Getting this to be stopped.
Well, if they're reading the Selkirk Record, they might have read the Winnipeg Free Press because it was on the front page.
Who knows, but all I know is the people. The people that I've been talking to in, uh, in our, in Saint Andrews, most of them don't have a clue that that is transpiring.
Social media? Can advertise.
Yeah, probably, I mean, on that, uh, the silver record and that, just have them do a story on.
What? What, like me?
On this, on our letter to the minister.
Well, they would have to agree to that.
Yeah, they would, but why not ask?
Good, good. Sure, we could, we could do it as a press release.
Yeah, actually, we could. They don't charge us for that.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, no, no, they don't charge it for a press release.
But there's no guarantee it gets it, but that's what we get.
Yeah, you have to do those, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Chris.
And social media.
Be a motion that council move in camera at seven oh two P M. To discuss matters that are preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out. Its activities and negotiations. As well as legal and personnel issues, and be it further resolved that the members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter. That is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under section one fifty-two, three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting of the council. Or the committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornboss, second there.
I'll second it.
Mondo, all those in favor? That is Carrie, we are in town. Motion to move out of camera at seven twelve P M, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slaker, second there, Councilor Maracki, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Maracki, all in favor? Carrie, be it resolved. Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twelve P M, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, second there, Deputy Mayor Maracki, all in favor?
Bye.
Thank you, that is Carrie. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.